Madam Chair, Jean, I believe we're all set.
All right. Oh, roll call. Got to get my list of your names. Okay. Mr. Stembridge. Ms. Bede Barazza.
Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Weewell.
Present.
Mr. Valencia.
Present.
And Mr. Collins.
Present.
All right. We're moving on.
We'll start with the hearing scheduled for 1:00 p.m. and we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this time frame.
Mr. Stembridge, it's Attorney Richard Linds. Good afternoon. The matter, I believe it's 60 Oak Ridge. It's the interpretation case at 1:00.
That would be case BOA 1485550 with the address of 60 Oak Ridge Street. Go right ahead.
Thank you. For the record, Richard Linds, 245 Sumner Street, East boss on behalf of the petitioner Derek Joyner. Madam Chair, this is on for interpretation from an appeal of a decision of the building inspector to issue a stop work order and a building permit. I have been in communication with Mr. Salas and we believe we have a path to resolve this issue. In the event that we don't, I'd like to be heard on it, but I believe we agreed on deferring this out to October 17th pending our review of what's necessary to get this resolved.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Javier. That's how I could, the deferral day would be October 17th.
Right, may I have a motion?
Motion.
To defer you off to our 17th.
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
And Mr. Collins.
Yes.
And I vote in favor as well. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
So with that, is there no more requests of withdrawal or withdrawal?
I think there are a couple. Raise hands.
Sorry, is there a request?
I see Gary Montel, I see your hand raised. I ask you to mute.
Yeah, I just sent a request to make him a panelist. You're so gay when, once you become a panelist.
Gary, are you here for, to defer?
No, we're not here to defer, no.
Okay, great. I think we're gonna...
Sorry for the confusion, sorry for the confusion.
Okay, no problems.
So with that, we'll move on to case BOA 1463517 with the address of 32 to 34 Larch Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Excuse me, may I please ask a question regarding the Oak Ridge Street issue?
If you have a question, I can talk to you offline. Let me make you a panelist and I'll send you a message.
All right, so let's proceed with 3234 Larch Street. Is the applicant on for this?
When he comes back.
Sorry.
Edward Terone?
Just come back to us.
Yes, Madam Chair, we can do a second call on this. We can move to the next case.
Okay, great. Let's move to the next case.
Which is case BOA 1477631 with the address of 175 to 175 E School Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present for this case?
Yes.
Your name and address on the record and proceed.
Gary Montel. I live at 15 Brownson Terrace in Jamaica Plain. I'm here as a part of the development team, an equity partner, and also representing my partner Angelo Celito of Celito LLC. We have, this property at 175 School Street in Jamaica Plain was a two-family, existing two-family dwelling that was in severe disrepair. We've met with the neighbors on this project about a year, maybe nine months to a year prior to putting the application in to ISD. We got, we proposed initially, we went to the neighbors to maybe save the house and add, do a four-unit building. We showed them elevations to potentially save the house. We also showed them a three-family new construction proposal. So my point is, is we've had three meetings prior to this board hearing today with the neighbors. We got Landmark's approval to take the house down. There was no delay. Again, the house was in really tough repair. The proposal before the board today is for a three-unit townhouse project. The property is zoned, zoning compliant for three units. The configuration as townhouses. We thought the proposal that originally went to ISD was zoning compliant, but the plans examiner disagreed, issued a few violations. We worked through those with the neighborhood and the plans examiner. We're here before the board today for one violation, which is lot frontage. We believe the requirement was 25 feet, but the plans examiner disagreed. So we came, we went back to the neighbors and this board for one variance today. We have a letter of support, I believe, that was submitted to the board from the Ecclestone Square Neighborhood Association. And we also got a seven to zero vote from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council to support this variance. Now you can see the front elevation here. We went to the neighbors with some townhouse, flat roof style buildings. And we also went with gable style. The neighbors prefer this style here, this is before you today. It's in line with the, a lot of the architecture over in that area of Atherton Street and School Street is the old stick-style frame design. So that's what we try to replicate here on this new construction. Front unit is facing the street. You can see it on the left side. Rear elevation on the right side. You can see the next panel. That is the right side elevation of the building. All the parking for this building is inside, which opened us up to more green space around the building. Next panel, please. That's the left side elevation. We keep moving down. That's the architect. We keep moving on until we get to the site plan. So what we did is we resubmitted some plans to the plans examiner at ISD. This is the final design as proposed with some BRA design review and some recommended, recommendations by the neighbors that are in their attached letter of support. Front unit is a townhouse, is a townhouse in the middle and a townhouse on the rear. Again, three units, one violation. Lot frontage.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
What's to require lot frontage and what's the violation?
So that was the, you know, we didn't agree with ISD. The lot frontage requirement for a three-unit building, meaning a townhouse has to be a minimum of three units. We thought we complied. It was 25 feet. The zoning, he didn't give us what, but I thought, he thought each unit needed 25 feet. We disagreed, but that was the one out of the four violations he originally cited that he, we couldn't get through with him on it. So I've attached some, I know the board doesn't want to get into a debate.
But what's the current lot frontage? What's proposed?
Fifty-one feet.
Okay. So potentially it's 25 or 75 and he's proposed this 51.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
In the multiple, in the multiple family district for this zoning, they call out 25 feet per building, but they don't call it out under that category. That was the debate.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
If not, we'll move to public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, call anyone with the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the mayor's office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Most recently, we held in a butters meeting on July 31st. There was a number of butters in attendance. Many appreciated the applicant working with them on kind of some of the design features and details on the home that's proposed. There was one resident who expressed to our office she had concerns about with the orientation of the building. If there's a fire, she felt it was unsafe to have residents walking up the driveway to get to the street. Beyond that, though, the applicant went on to meet with the Ecclestone Square Neighborhood Association and their housing committee for that civic issued a letter in support of the proposal. They went on to meet with the JPNC. And as I understand, the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council voted to support this proposal. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Okay, and I have no additional raised hands. Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve with the proviso that plans be submitted to VPDA for designer review with special attention to minimizing impacts on the neighboring property to the south.
Thank you.
Great. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, we continue moving forward for now. Case BO, two companion cases, case BOA 1486207 with an address of 28 Clifton Street. And along with that is case BOA 1501503 with an address of 30 Clifton Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, Mrs. Stembridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small. I have a business address on 51 Dobson Road. Today, we are here seeking relief to erect six residential units on the site. The zoning sub-district here is a 3F 4,000. Our lot size is approximately 4,500 square feet. And our zoning violations are as follows. Lot width, we are on a corner lot. This proposed site is at the corner of Clifton Street and Marshfield Street. And the width of the lot requirement is 25. And because we're on a corner lot, we have 60 feet. The FAR floor area ratio, the required FAR is 0.8. We are proposing 1.3. Building height, the building height requirement in this zoning sub-district is three feet, 3 stories, 35 feet. We are at three stories, 33 feet. So we think we were cited erroneously by the plans examiner. But yard insufficient, but our requirement is 20 feet. We are lining this building up for a motor alignment with the houses on Marshfield Street. Side yard setback requirement is 10 feet. We have 12. We, that one was decided erroneously as well. And the rear yard is 30 feet and we have approximately four feet. Madam Chair, the bedrooms, the units, our two bedrooms, two baths, and are approximately 1,000 square feet. And as you can see on the, from the site plan shown, we have proposing four parking spaces on the side of the building coming off of Clifton Street where there is an existing curb cut. And this building will be owner-occupied and the units will be rented to family members as the, the family is very large and they are seeking to keep the building within their family and provide housing for all of their family members. You stop there and pause for any questions that the board may have at this time.
Any questions from the board?
So just, so I can understand this large parcel currently, the zoning in sub-district is for three-family. And you're proposing, you're proposing almost side by side, almost like a triple-decker typology where it's like three apartment flats on each side, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so, why take up all of your open space for parking? Why not, you know, why wasn't there an idea of potentially either reducing parking spaces or finding a way to put them inside the building, you know, for one space? You know, that's, that's the only kind of concern that I have right now for, for the project.
And so through the community process, meeting with DSNI and all of the butters, many of the butters felt that parking wasn't issue in the area and wanted us to try to get as many cars off the street as possible. So that's why we, you know, we're taking away some of the greenery to provide for the off-street parking. But, I mean, if the board so desires, we could take some of, two of the parking spaces out and, you know, do some landscaping, plant some trees and things. But that came as a direct result of conversations with the community.
Is it resident parking there? What's the parking on the street like?
I don't think it's resident parking on that, on Clifton Street.
And what about existing trees on the site? Can you speak to that?
I think there are a couple of trees on the site currently, one of which I know will have to be removed because it's pretty smack dab center, in the center of the lot. But again, we will be required through BPDA design review to plant shrubs and, and trees along, along the edges of the property, which we will badly do.
Yeah, I think the concern is sort of the removal of kind of mature trees in exchange for paving and parking, off-street parking, which is something that, you know...
Yeah, I know.
We, we try to avoid. Is Mr. Hampton on by any chance? Because can we hear from the BPDA on this?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Panato, members of the board. Jonathan, BPDA. We recommended denial without prejudice and as you had mentioned earlier, one of our concerns was the building scale and the site's lack of open space. This case was actually before the board a year ago as well. And the same recommendation was made by us on the same project. Proposal is excessive, would require the removal of mature trees. Our recommendation at that time was the proponent should consider preserving the trees and reduce the number of units. The ZVA denied this without prejudice on September 27th of last year. So nothing much has changed, especially with our recommendation.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I mean, if the applicant can respond to that, you were denied without prejudice, what improvements have you made since then?
Madam Chair, I was not involved with the project at that time, so I don't know what was said at the prior hearing. But I do know in meeting with the owners, we are very, very willing to, to, you know, again, we can remove some of the, the parking and plant mature trees. And as again, I know one, one tree in particular would have to be removed, but we are open and willing to replant mature trees on the site along with, you know, other shrubs and, and other greenery and other landscaping.
Yeah, I think it's, it's not just a question of the parking. It's probably the density of the units, you know? So if you remove the parking, but you continue six units, you know, I think...
And I think, you know...
It needs to go back through a process to sort of vet that.
Along, along Marshfield and Clifton Street, there are a number of triple-deckers along the, along the street. The streetscape is consistent with triple-deckers and, you know, three and two-family dwellings. So in terms of keeping in line with what's currently in that neighborhood...
Yeah, it's more, I think it's more not so much the height, it's the lot coverage that I think is a concern from both the BPDA and from the board. Let's, any other questions from the, from the board?
I wanted to sort of reiterate the concern with the amount of building on the site. And I'm not sure if this is something BPDA can address in the moment, but I would just have concerns around site distance with buildings so close to the block line and, you know, vehicular traffic being able to see sort of beyond the building, you know, if they were coming down or into, that's Marshfield Street. So I just wanted to put that out there as a concern.
Any other questions from the board? If not, let's move to public testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Our office, City Home's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office did hold a meeting last year on July 25th. Of director butters in support of the project at the time. Also, the area civic, which is Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative. No letters of opposition at this moment. With that, we defer the judgment to this board. Thank you.
In addition, Madam Chair, can I just add that if, if Mr. Stembridge could look into the file, I think we have letters of support from the senator and city council.
Okay, yeah, let's finish the public testimony and then you can respond. Thank you. Any, any other?
I have no additional raised hands.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just saying that there should be letters of the support from the state senator and city councillor and other members of the community with regard to the project.
To answer, Mr. Small, yes, there are letters of support. I definitely see one from state senator Louie Miranda. I see a document of just about three pages of signatures from the community, the neighborhood, in support. And that's what I see. And also one from city councillor, Tanya Anderson. They do have support.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll put forward a motion to deny without prejudice. I just do not, I think the setbacks along the front edge of the site needs to be improved amongst other things that the board talked about today. The amount of building on site, the parking configuration. I think there's a little more work to be done.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Stembridge?
At this point, I'll vote no.
Okay.
I, I, I do, yes, I think it could be improved, but I think it's in the, in the realm of that should move forward. But I'll, but I'll vote no.
All right, Ms. Bede Barazza?
Sorry, I was muted. I'm going to vote no because I think that, I think the orientation of your triple-decker is in the wrong orientation. I think the BPDA can help you a little bit with the massing, breaking, breaking down that large massing. But it is very close to the lot, to the adjacent buildings. And I think that you would benefit greatly from reducing parking altogether or just including one ground floor parking space inside the building to allow for more open area. So this is why I'm saying no.
So I'm confused about the motion and the, and the comments. So the motion...
So I'm giving, I'm giving, I'm, I'm giving, my motion, I'm saying no to Katie's motion.
No to Katie's motion, okay.
Correct, but I'm, I'm giving response as to why.
Okay, gotcha. Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
No, for the same reasons.
All right, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Tell me what we need for a quorum here?
We would need five, Madam Chair.
So we, we are ready. One, two, three. We are, we don't, we're not going to have five. So we need another motion. Yeah.
I can, I'll make a motion to approve it with BPDA design review. Special attention to density and open space.
Can I add improving the front setbacks for site distance?
Yes.
For vehicles and pedestrians.
All right.
Second.
Yeah, that's a yes. Oh, that, oh, that's a second, okay. So it's been, motion's been made and seconded. So Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. And we will...
We have a little work to do.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, your architect has a lot of work to do.
Yes, yes, he does. We will work on it. Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it. Enjoy the day.
Thank you.
And finally, Madam Chair, we'll return to case BOA 1463517 with the address of 32 to 34 Larch Street. And again, ask if there is, if the applicant and/or their representative is present to represent this case.
Hi, if you're on, can you raise your hand? I don't see anyone.
Yeah, and I don't see anything in the chat.
There it is. Someone just...
Don, sending a request to unmute. Are you there for this proposal? We're having a hard time with the function. I'm going to try to make you a panelist.
Oh, look who's back. If you need me. Not.
We needed you a minute ago.
Okay, Don, once you become a panelist, can you unmute yourself? Okay, Dawn, once you become a panelist, can you unmute yourself? Okay, it's not allowed me to unmute them, but the raised hand, they're in the panelist section right now. I'm not sure if they're having issues with their technology, but-
Could you at least put something in the chat so we know that you're here for 3234 Larch Street? I don't know how much time to give this. We can't seem to find the applicant. And we did pass it over once. It's, we've gone back to it.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm not sure if this individual is the applicant or not. We haven't received anything. If it's a, I'll leave it up to the board. You can-
Should we defer it? Make a motion to, you know-
You can, you can defer it.
Suggest a deferral?
Yeah. And we can do it November 14th. And we can follow up on that. If not, you can make a motion to deny without prejudice as well.
I'll make a motion to defer until November 14th. Second.
All right. Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Baraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries. All right, I think that's our agenda.
Well, yeah.
The case law was perfect today.
Good job, Madam Chair.
Well, it was perfect given, like, all the deferrals, so.
Well, so your next one's not gonna be, so don't yell at us, don't yell at us in October and November.
But it's the right ending time.
That's, that's all, that's all for the next one.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Bye-bye.